Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the thirty meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. If you're appearing before the commission, please state your name and spell it for the for the commission reporter. Commissioners, I see we have minutes to approve.
Are you sure? Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the forty-fifth, twenty-ninth, and thirty-first meetings as previously circulated.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Moving into the preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two-one dash two-two-two-six-six. From JMM Management, DBA the counter.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Mr. Chu.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Newton Chu on behalf of the transfer applicant, JMM Management. Also appearing is John Muranoff, who is the president of JMM Management, Inc. We have no changes to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Ms. Hori.
Yeah, this is a preliminary hearing, so I have nothing to read into the record at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
Motion to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-two-six-six.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-two-six-six. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number two, application number two-one dash two-two-seven-three-nine from Industry Outlaw, Inc., DBA, Mana and Pua.
Hi, Ashley Hutchison, Industry Outlaw.
Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
I have a few questions. Ms. Hutchinson, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So, did you have a chance to look at the investigative report?
Very much so, yes.
Okay, if you if you have it in front of you, if you could reference page number four. And the first heading on the page about a third down says conflicted statements by applicant.
Correct.
I wanted to get your clarification or anything from you that shows that you're not providing conflicting statements or to clarify the information provided to the investigator, please?
Of course. On my resume, my professional resume that was submitted, I have a longstanding history in wholesale over ten years, which is, in my opinion, the only reason that I have this ability to be in the industry that I've been in. That was all dissolved December of two thousand nineteen. And when the investigator started his thorough investigation, there, I believe he may have found some things conflicting online with old websites and some of the previous work I'd been involved when, which I'm no longer involved in. We, I personally have not been involved in wholesale since December of two thousand nineteen. I am only in a retail position now in my business. I only own and operate restaurants, bars, and retail outlets. And that's the reason that we want to bring it to Hawaii, is I want to come back home. I want to be able to do that there. I no longer consult, I no longer sell, and I no longer own and operate anything. One of the items that Homer had found in the investigative report was from industryoutlaw.com that said that I was indeed, which our business was, are my business, was that we are wholesale wine brokers, consultants, and we have not, I have not engaged in that since two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so what it sounds to me is that you had previous functions or titles that ended sometime in two thousand nineteen, and since then you no longer do that work. Is that a fair statement?
Very much so. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or type of action, commissioners?
A motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-seven-three-nine.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Mahalo.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you.
Moving on to temporary license applications, application, agenda item number three, application number two-one dash two-two-nine-two-five from Volcano Skewer House.
Greatness, you're authorized agent appearing on behalf of the applicant. Also online should be Zhenbo Liu, that's Z-H-E-N-B-O-L-I-U, also known as Rebecca, R-E-B-E-C-C-A-L-I-U. We have received the investigator's report. Have no changes additions at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
Yes, Mr. Nishiyoka, I have one question actually for your your client. Upon reviewing the personal history and affidavit, it seems like they have relatively no liquor experience. Just wanted to get their a statement from them, you know, on how they have prevailed on the rules of laws.
Commissioner, yes, I may address that. We've, that's one of the things that we did notice in doing this application. Mr. Zhen Shou, that's Z-H-A-N-G-S-H-U, has some experience, I believe, in Los Angeles, working in a restaurant setting. We are working with them to make sure that they understand their obligations under the laws, rules of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. And, you know, actually going over what to look for as far as underage drinking. I mean, this is not a very big restaurant. The footprint itself is not many tables. But, be that as it may, we are working with them to make sure that they do not run into any possible problems that people without experience may encounter, you know, without this kind of assistance.
Yes, okay, thank you. Just to know that you will be helping to educate. Motion to approve temporary license application number two-one dash two-two-nine-two-five.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve application number two-one dash two-two-nine-two-five. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka.
Thank you, commissioners.
Moving on to requests, agenda item number four, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-one-nine from Aloha Pronto Waikiki LLC, DBA Aloha Beer Downtown.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. I guess I got a doubleheader since this baseball season, but great Nishiyoka appearing, authorized agent appearing on behalf of the applicant. Also online should be Yusuke Ishikawa, that's Y-U-S-U-K-E, first name Ishikawa, I-S-H-I-K-A-W-A, who is a manager and director of the applicant. We have again received and reviewed investigator Tomoku's report. Have no changes and or additions at this point in time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or type of action?
Yes, Mr. Nishiyoka, I have a few questions again for you and your client. This, we did receive a floor plan. I'm having a little hard time reading it, but I I think that I know what's going on. It seems like a pretty large area that you'll be expanding to, and this is exterior, and the current license premise is within the
Correct.
existing building. So my concerns is that, you know, that it's going to be used for special events. How you plan to staff and control that that area. I'm not sure if you could elaborate on some of the hours of operation, you know, as well, that would be great.
Sure. What's going on here is that Central Pacific Bank, who is the landlord, has seen the nature of their business and how well they're doing. And what they're doing is trying to expand the footprint into the atrium area, which is part of the enclosed bank building. That will be used only for special events and only be for after-hours. Therefore, it won't be open to the general public and control will be maintained with security, you know, and people watching. Obviously, the doors, you know, again, will not be open to the public, so that's, that will be addressed accordingly, as is only for special events. With regard to the outside area, which is fronting the bank onto the King Street area, the layout of the area, and the blueprint doesn't show this very well, but they're able to basically contain that area, so it's a self-contained area. And again, they're able to police that area because of the nature of the way it's built out. And of course, they will have people watching at all times. And that area will only be open after four-thirty PM on a, on a daily basis.
Okay, so my concern, again, is that if you're going to open it, I guess after four-thirty, how is that? How is it going to be secured, or what is your employee count? Do you plan to hire additional employees to to watch over that area? I'm not too familiar with it, so it's and again, it is quite large.
Yeah, at this point, because of, Yusuke, if you want to adjust that, I will turn that over to you.
Sure, sure, yes. So we will be staffing up after four-thirty to monitor the exterior space, additional exterior space. And we will also be bringing out stanchions so that we can section off the exterior space that we'll be utilizing on a daily basis from four-thirty.
So, again, your current goal is that you, your special events will be throughout the year. It doesn't sound like it's going to be every day. Your everyday needs for the space, you will be using it exclusively after four-thirty only?
Yes, so we do get busy after, after four-thirty when the bank closes, or the the tellers close down. And so our thought is to open up the the exterior space adjacent to our current space for our customers on a daily basis at that time. And then we will be staffing up after four-thirty to be able to monitor the space and service, service the space accordingly.
And again, Commissioner Lee, I get, emphasize the atrium and area, which is being extended into, will be only used on special events for the bank, for Central Pacific Bank. Not, it would not be, at this point in time, correct me if I'm wrong, Yusuke, but it is not open for the general public, but that atrium area, which is inside of the building, will only be for CPP functions, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Sorry, I'm a little confused. So the there is a portion of the floor plan that is within an atrium area, and there's a portion of that floor plan that is exterior of that? Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Do you have any chance of a diagram that you can present to us? Because I'm
Sure, so if you have the diagram up, so we're, the, okay, our expansion includes the atrium, which is the interior, which is inside, within the building. And also includes, the expansion also includes the exterior, which is adjacent to the atrium and also adjacent to our current licensed space. The atrium and the the exterior space that is directly adjacent to the atrium will be exclusively reserved for Central Pacific Bank events, so we will not be utilizing that that space on a regular basis. And we will be self-imposing a restriction so that customers are able to access that space. The location that we are going to be utilizing on a daily basis is directly adjacent to our current interior space. And that space, it's laid out in a way where we can section it off with with built-in benches, landscaping, and also with the the stanchions that we'll be utilizing. And it's in direct site of our of our location.
If you will look at exhibit A, B, rather, on investigator Tomoku's report, I believe that the outside area is along South King Street, and it's delineated, if you can see that square right above where it says current and addition, it's marked, I think, we marked in current and marked off additional areas. If that, if you can take a look at that, Commissioner. That's the out area.
Yeah, I am taking a look at it. Unfortunately, my copy might be pretty bad. I, it does seem like you do have a plan. The problem I'm having with it is that it's not really on paper. It's hard to, it's hard to need to kind of decipher it with the information provided.
Yeah, it's not very clear, Mr. Nishiyoka. I'm looking at it as well. I'm also concerned about there being so much outdoor space. I'm familiar with the building. I mean, when I worked in downtown, I walked by it almost every day. Is there a reason why you folks are requesting so much outdoor space? You folks plan on having outdoor events? And if so, how do you plan on securing that from the road? Because that's a, that's, that's King Street. That's a main street, and it's busy all the time.
That's, that's correct.
It raises safety concerns for me.
Yes, that's correct. And I'm not sure if you've walked past, since they've renovated the outside as well as the lobby, but there is landscaping and built-in benches that are now present right outside of the building that makes it kind of self-contained. And and again, we will be utilizing stanchions in addition to that to make sure it's all contained.
If, if it would address, if we would, if the commission is inclined, at this point, so inclined, I mean, we could continue this for when we can in the process give you maybe a better enlarged floor plan as well as possibly some additional photographs of the area. If, if the commission is so inclined. If not.
I guess, yes, Mr. Nishiyoka, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, I personally would like to see more diagrams and more information on on what you're proposing to do kind of segregate it with, you know, separated, what's going to be like, what's going to be used on a daily basis versus what you plan to extend out into at certain times for these special events, just so we kind of understand it a little better and make sure the public is is safe and protected as well.
I also, Mr. Nishiyoka, would like to see a more detailed floor plan, additional pictures, and, you know, any, any more detail you folks can provide that would give us some comfort in knowing that you folks are going to be able to manage this with the interest of safety for the public and for your customers.
That's not a problem, Chair. So I would recommend, I would ask that the commission continue this for one week, and in the process, we can get something in, hopefully by Monday.
Okay.
So that would be the fifteenth? That correct? Yeah.
I believe so. I believe so, yes. Seven days for nights would be the fifteenth, yes.
Okay. So we are on agenda item number four. My motion will be to continue, agenda item four, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-one-nine to April fifteenth.
That's good. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved in seconded to continue agenda item number four, April fifteenth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. I'm sorry, agenda item is continued. Thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Chair. Cut, Commissioner numbers.
All right. Where are we, guys? Moving on to other business, agenda item number five, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-six-nine from Mr. Jason Takemura.
Hello, Jason Takemura, J-A-S-O-N-T-A-K-E-M-U-R-A, president and owner of Bamboo Catering.
What are you requesting today, Mr. Takemura?
I was trying to request to see if I can get an extension for the affidavit to be extended, at least maybe for another year without having to apply, I mean, put in and get notarized for every special event application.
Okay. Commissioners? Questions, type of action?
So you're requesting one year, your previous approval was?
Yeah, I believe previous those two years.
Okay, my, my motion will be to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-six-nine for a period of one year.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the request for a one-year period. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Takemura.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number six, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-zero from Mr. Keith Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for PB Restaurant Corp. This is a request to allow PB Restaurant Corp. to apply for a temporary license. This is the location of the old Kakako Kitchen in Ward Center. And although Kakako Kitchen just recently closed last year, by the full disclosure, their liquor licenses held only from two thousand one until two thousand seven, and they did not renew it. However, there has been no intervening tenant in the space since then. And the type of use that PB Restaurant Corp. would use it for is similar to Kakako Kitchen. It's going to be a restaurant. It's not going to be a late-night space. The other factor that I would argue is PB Restaurant Corp. presently operates a restaurant in Kailua, next to Kailua Foodland, that's Ta'Karia El Gallo Rosa. They've been a licensee for three years. They've been very fortunate during the pandemic, as indicated in the packet before you. They've haven't laid off employees. They've paid their landlord. So they're asking for a waiver because this site did have a liquor license, albeit there was a gap, but there was no intervening tenant.
Commissioners, any comments, questions, type of action?
My motion is approve, approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-zero.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the request. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Tell your client, like tacos.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-eight from Jordan Kakalia, owner of the cutlery.
Hello, good afternoon, Commission and Chairpersons. My name is Jordan Kakalia, A-O-R-D-A-N, last name is Kakalia, K-A-K-A-L-I-A. I first would like to apologize for my failure to make note of my parent company, which is JNE Capital Investment Group LLC. And we're doing business as the cutlery on thirty-four thirty-five Waiili Avenue, Suite one oh three Honolulu Hawaii nine-six-eight-one-six. We would like to humbly request before the Commission and Chairpersons their consideration of the waiving of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-two-point-one-eight, which would enable us to submit our temporary standalone application beyond the working five days of the surrender of the previous license or the closing of the business.
Commissioners, questions or type of action?
Thank you for that. Our request would be to, my motion would be to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-eight.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the request. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Request is approved. Thank you, Ms. Kakalia. Good luck.
You. Mahalo, thank you. Thank you so much.
Moving into adjudication hearings, Ms. Nesti.
Good afternoon, Catherine Nesti, Deputy Corporation Counsel, here for the adjudication hearings today.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight, Arena Eight-oh-eight Sports Lounge.
Hi, good afternoon.
Please introduce yourself and state your name for the record, or spell your name for the record.
My first name is Rainet, R-A-E-N-E-T-T-E, last name is Lam, L-A-M.
Ms. Nesti, can you please read the charges?
Yes, there are two charges. Charge number one, on or about December twenty-second, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time, time record entries at the time its employees, Shan Angeles, Todd Derlocker, Tiana Aspeely, Tori Hamabara, and Dax Moore reported on duty and/or when the employees went off duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight-point-four-B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. Charge number two, on or about December twenty-second, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty-twenty dash thirty, COVID-nineteen novel coronavirus Honolulu's COVID-nineteen recovery framework, amended and restated order implementing tier-two dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Lam, how do you wish to plead to charge number one?
So we, I understand both charges, and we've
I'm just, I'm just asking for a plea. You can accept the plea, deny the plea, or
Oh, accept.
contest. Okay. Motion to accept the plea, accepting the charge for charge one.
Been moved in seconded to accept the charge, accept charge one for agenda item number eight. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. The plea is accepted.
And Ms. Lam, how do you wish to plead to charge number two?
Accept.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. The plea is accepted.
Okay, Ms. Lam, you'll have an opportunity to explain, but I'm going to ask the prosecutor if she could provide her recommendations, okay? So hold on. Ms. Nesti, provide your recommendations for charges one and two, please.
Charge number one is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. In regards to charge number two, the the violation was in regards to the contact tracing information log. It was lacking, there were only names and dates. It was lacking address and telephone number. This is a first, oh, yeah, this is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Lam, do you wish to provide any explanation for charges one or two?
For both charges, we've increased our policies for, at least for the employees, we've increased our policy in terms of in talking in, talking out to ensure something like that won't happen again. As for the contact tracing, we've spent a good amount of resources updating to make everything digital. Customers can't fake their information, at least the time and the data entry. That way it would get, make it easier for you guys to double-check if needed.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fines of two hundred fifty dollars for charge number one and five hundred dollars for charge number two?
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the recommended fines of two hundred fifty dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two, for a total of seven hundred fifty dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Lam. Calling agenda item number nine, Back Alley Cafe. We have anyone making appearance for Do we have anyone making appearance for agenda item number nine?
Yes, uh, for Back Alley Cafe.
Ma'am, please state your name and spell it for the record.
Alinda Thai, L I N D A T H A I.
Thank you.
Ms. Nesti?
On or about December thirtieth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with the laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty-one COVID-nineteen novel coronavirus Honolulu's COVID-nineteen recovery framework, second amended and restated order implementing tier two dated December twenty-third, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Thai, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Plea is accepted.
Ms. Nesti, what's your recommendation?
Uh, this violation was for contact tracing entries were missing the required information of the five entries. Three out of five were missing addresses and two of the five were missing phone numbers and last names. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Thai, would you like to provide any comment or explanation?
Um, no.
Okay, and going forward, are you able to make sure that you do comply with the contact tracing requirements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item nine.
Second.
Been moved in second and to approve the recommended fine, five hundred dollars for agenda item number nine. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Thai. Calling agenda item number ten, Club Secret.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest to agenda item number ten.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Then moved in second and to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. The plea is accepted.
Ms. Nesti?
Yes, this is in regards to an employee consuming liquor on, uh, on duty. This is actually a third violation with a recommended fine of two thousand dollars. The first violation occurred on September tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the licensee was fined three hundred dollars. The second violation occurred on November eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, the licensee was fined a thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Any comment?
Yeah, I've got a pretty lengthy explanation and I get to use the download. So I'll ask Doug to put it on the screen, not yet, Doug, but soon. So this is a situation where this was the owner that was drinking on duty, but the owner had asked the bartender to clock her out specifically, and that's why she didn't feel she was committing a violation. So what I'm going to have put on the screen is the timesheet that was in the bar, which shows my client as the owner and also shows the timesheet entry because she told the bartender to mark her out and the bartender simply put an X instead of the time. And I think the bartender told the Liquor, Liquor Commission investigators that she didn't have time to go put the time to clock her out, but that was certainly my client's intent, the owner, to clock out. So Doug, you can put that on so the commission can see that. So if you take a look at the Club Secret timesheet, you're looking at Tui Fung is the name of the owner. That's the first name. So if you're looking all the way on the top right-hand corner, Saturday, which is eight-ten, so you see the time that she signed in, you see an X on the space below, which is what the bartender put in because my client asked the bartender to sign her out. Obviously, the bartender just put an X in there, but that's why my client believed that she had been signed out. And I want to thank the commission for allowing me to use this because this has been very useful, so. But that's, uh, that's my client's explanation. She thought that she had clocked out, he asked the bartender to clock out, and that's, you can see visual proof of what happened.
Okay, uh, Mr. Oh, could you keep that document being published, but I do have a question for Ms. Nesti. Do you have any comment or any, any other comments on this explanation, please?
You know, I don't have a comment on Mr. Kiuchi's explanation or on the exhibit, but I do want to make a correction on the record. I, um, I had discussed the prior violations and I, I wanted to just make a correction. So the first violation would have been the November eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. The second would have been August eleventh to twenty-ninth, which I wanted to correct that for the record.
What's the second fine for the two thousand and eighteen?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is actually, excuse me, I actually had it right the first time. The two thousand and nineteen is this violation, so I'm sorry, going back, I did have it corrected first time. Twenty fourteen is the first violation, twenty seventeen is the second violation. Three hundred dollars for the first, one thousand for the second. Sorry about that.
Do your records show, and I'm not sure if it does, Ms. Nesti, whether the owner was implicated in either the first or second violation?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Okay, and I have a question for you, Mr. Kiuchi. And again, looking at the timesheet, if I, if you look in the middle of the document, there are other line items. I can't really see it from my laptop in terms of the names, but roughly in the middle.
Right.
Couple of lines that show Xs right through. Do you have any understanding what those Xs represent?
Yeah, those Xs represent that the employee wasn't working that day. And that's, that's essentially what the bartender did instead of clocking her out, and the bartender admitted that to the investigators. So normally, when the X is put in there, the employee is not working. Because if you look at the spaces where the X are in, there's no time clocked in or clocked out. So that's consistent with that explanation.
Okay, and has the procedure changed to use something other than an X to indicate when someone goes off the clock?
Well, they're, they're supposed to put in the time, and what has changed is that the, the owner is going to do it herself instead of trusting on the, trusting the bartender, which needs to be done. I mean, the problem with a lot of these bars is that, you know, ideally you want something other than a timesheet that looks like this, but unfortunately, we don't have that, so.
Okay. My motion is going to be to approve a fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number ten.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve a one thousand dollar fine for agenda item number ten. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. The motion is carried.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. You can take that down. Appreciate it.
Um, calling agenda item number eleven, Club Secret.
Uh, again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. As to both charges, one and two, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest on both charges.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two of agenda item eleven.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to accept the no contest pleas. Um, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. The no contest pleas are accepted for agenda item number eleven, charges one and two.
Ms. Nesti, could you provide your recommendations for both charges, please?
Sure. Charge number one is a first violation. This is in regards to an employee, um, not employed as an exotic dancer, being unclothed. Uh, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. For charge number two, this is also a first violation. The charges in regards to obstruction or warning of the approach of a liquor commission investigator. The recommended fine for charge number two is one thousand dollars.
If we're charged to Ms. Nesti in bold, there seems to be some description of the conduct. Do you have any further description of what the conduct was?
Uh, my understanding is just that, um, as the commissioner, uh, excuse me, not commissioner, as the investigator was uh, walking to the back karaoke room, Ms. Nguyen was saying something in a hurried tone, but in a foreign language, presumably warning of the investigator approaching.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
Um, let me address charge two first. What she was saying in Vietnamese was liquor commission. So that's why we've pleaded no contest to that because very obviously there's a violation. As to charge one, I'll readily admit, um, unfortunately, there was illegal activity going on in a karaoke room. That employee was fired right after the incident, has not been back.
Okay, thank you. Motion to prove the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one and one thousand dollars for charge number two for agenda item eleven.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried and the fines, the recommended fines of five hundred dollars and one thousand dollars are approved. Uh, calling agenda item number twelve, Club Secret.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. As to both charges, one and two on agenda item number twelve, we waive reading the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, for charges one and two for agenda item twelve.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to accept the no contest pleas for agenda item number twelve, charges one and two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min, I mean Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min, sorry.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Ms. Nesti, what are your recommendations?
Uh, charge number one is a first violation. This is in regards to drinking on the premises after the mayor's orders, um, after the ten o'clock order. Oh, excuse me, that's. Yes, just sorry, charge number one. It was ten twenty-five, so twenty-five minutes after the ten o'clock cutoffs. The recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars. In regards to charge number two, this is also a first violation. The investigator had attempted to enter through the front entrance, which was locked. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Sorry, what was the recommended fine?
For charge two is five hundred dollars.
And did I hear you correctly, seven hundred and fifty for charge number one?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what happened is my, my clients were closing down, which is why the front door was locked. They were actually exiting through the side door. And when they were exiting through the side doors, when the commission came in. When the commission investigators came in, what they found was there were still glasses still on the bar, but nobody else was in the bar because my clients, um, and the employees, including my client and my client's husband, were all leaving the bar. So it was not as if they were still serving, um, employees. Basically, what they decided to do was clean up the next day. So what you had was leftover glasses on, on the bar. And that's why the front was locked. They'd locked the front because they went out through the back and it had been closed the bar. So those were the circumstances.
Okay, Ms. Nesti, any further comments?
No, no comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fines of seven hundred and fifty for charge one and five hundred for charge number two.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the recommended fines, uh, for agenda item number twelve. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, Golden Pond Liquor and Sundry's. Anyone appearing for agenda item number thirteen?
Second. Hi, my name is Young Lee, Y O U N G, L E E. I, the owner, and then also president of Golden Pond Inc. I, you know, I've been running that, uh, three convenience stores since, since nineteen eighty-one at the, you know, seven hundred Bishop Street, you know, that the high US building, that office building in downtown. And then our second, uh, store is at the two hu, uh, you know, two hundred South King Street, uh, King and Alakia Corner at the, uh, you know, the Central Pacific Bank of building. That's nineteen eighty-four. I owned that, that running, and then also nineteen eighty-seven, uh, Hawaiian Monaco Hotel in YKK. So that's, uh, you know, uh, until today, it's forty years, you know, that I remember that, that, uh, convenience store business, so.
And thank you, Mr. Lee. The prosecutor is going to read the charge, please.
I'm sorry, I cannot read clearly.
Thank you. I'm asking the prosecutor if she can read the charge.
On or about March eighth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor for allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Megan Ayala, at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Lee, how would you like to plead?
Oh, yes, no, no contest, and also, and I, uh.
Okay, hold on a second. Hold on. I'm gonna, um, accept your plea and then you can explain later, okay?
Yes.
Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Okay, no, that, uh, that, I think.
Hold on, Mr. Lee, hold on. Correct, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Nesti, your recommendation, please?
Hi, yes, this is a first violation. This was part of the alcohol compliance and enforcement project. The decoy was, was asked for identification, which was a vertical ID, uh, but not asked if they were twenty-one years old. The recommendation is one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lee, if you want, you can provide an explanation or comment on this, uh, charge.
Yes, I want, I just want to express relation, I mean, about no contest. You know, I, uh, my date of birth is nineteen four, April fifth, nineteen forty-nine. So the three, three days ago, I am seventy-two years old. And then, so in March, I think, I don't exactly remember that what they, but in March is the beginning, you know, the stage for the COVID-nineteen. So we are in the, uh, the Hawaiian Monaco Hotel in YKK. That's, uh, uh, you know, in the hotel, so we are in the lobby. And so your hotel, that time, around that time, is a hotel occupancy rate is, you know, less than five percent, almost close to zero. So that's why I lay out, you know, that, uh, several employees, you know, that Sunday, only short hours, I mean, we open seven-thirty and then close at the seven o'clock Sunday. That's why I cover, you know, myself, but, you know, even seventy-one, at that time, is seventy-one years old. But I, you know, though I had no problem, you know, for help, you know, but, uh, the, my eyesight, you know, is getting weak. So that's why, I, when I handled it, uh, you know, minor or, you know, whoever, you get the, alcohol, you know, by alcoholic beverage, I used that magnifying, magnifying glass, you know, on the underside of the cashier's store. So that, uh, that, uh, that, then they, that looked like there's a minor. So I, I checked, I, you know, asked for the ID, and then I checked that with the magnifying glass. And then, you know, Hawaiian, my ID is, you know, like a horizontal, this is, ID is a vertical. So I checked that ID and then ninety, I read, you know, nineteen ninety-eight, which is, you know, eligible for the, you know, that, you know, not the minor. Yeah, it's a, it's a, I mean, uh, over twenty-one. So that's why I, I sold it, you know, I, I, but one other reason, you know, I. You know, I meant the sinus problem, you know, is a uh runny nose and then sneezing. So I take it that, you know, it's getting worse, you know, I take uh, you know, allergy medicine, you know. So the time is around the four, four o'clock, four thirty, something like that afternoon. So I open up the seven o'clock in the morning. It's a long hour, but, you know, unfortunately, that time is a very bad, you know, situation that my, you know, the sinus. So I, that, you know, that allergy period is make me go those and then, you know, a little bit, you know, sleepy, you know. So anyway, still in the four thirty around that, that look like a minor boy, you know, came in. So I guess that I, you know, the ID, I checked it, you know, but unfortunately, that I read my, with this reading, you know. So I really, yes, I admit, you know, that's anyway, I made a mistake, but I just one more time, I say forty years. You know, I know that my employees, you know, made a true citation, is a, not from the downtown of, the downtown store, only YKK store. So every time you get the citation, they made the citation and I came into here, hearing myself, you know, I, you know, that. That's why I knew that, you know, there is, once you get the citation, it's very own or still, you know, that, I mean, I gotta pay, you know, duty. So very severe consequences. So for I probably say to you, honestly say to you, I try my best, you know, to not to, you know, say to, you know, that alcoholic beverage to minor. I always, you know, trying archie and then training, you know, my employees, you know, that when I, even when I travel out of country. Even I call this, you know, overseas calls and then to, to the manager or, you know, that every, every days, you know, something like that. But uh, you know, that, anyway, I made myself, mistake of myself, so I really regret, you know, what I done yet. So, so I, you know, that I plan to retire maybe, you know, one more year, next year. So anyway, thank you very much, you know, you give us chance, you know, to, that, tell you that story, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate um your comments and good luck on your next year. Be very careful.
Yes.
For this is something we, like you, we take very seriously.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my recommendation is, I'm sorry. My motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item thirteen.
Yes, okay, 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 thank you.
Seconded to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, Palama's Supermarket, Makalua.
Hello?
Afternoon, sir. Are you appearing for agenda item number fourteen, Palama's supermarket? Go ahead, say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Daniel Lim, L I M. I represent Palama's Market.
Is that thing?
Honor about March eighth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Kai Mason at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statute.
Mr. Lim, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second.
And moved and seconded to accept the no contest, please. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Nasty, what is your recommendation?
Uh, this is a second violation. Uh, this is also part of the ACE program. The clerk did ask for identification, was a vertical ID, but did not ask if the decoy was twenty-one years old. The recommendation, uh, the recommended fine is two thousand.
Mr. Lim, do you have any comment or explanation?
Um, you know, we, we do extensive training. Um, our computers, our POS systems are designed to prompt, to enter a date uh for the birthday. And so our cashiers are, you know, uh supposed to enter the actual date on the IDs. Um, this cashier decided that, you know, she could, you know, uh, do things outside of what we, you know, train. And so after this, um, her employment is not, she's no longer employed with us. Um, but yeah, we, we tried to get all of our cashiers to do, follow the rules. Um, she just decided to not follow it and that was a result.
Okay, I, I'm concerned this is a second violation and as you know, there can always be the human error or a human process that overrides a system like a POS.
Right.
But uh, get some confidence from you, Mr. Lim. What are you doing to ensure this does not occur again?
Uh, you know, we, what we do is, you know, we remind constantly, you know, our cashiers to, to, you know, check the IDs and to enter the dates. The POS system will not move to the next level unless a date is entered. For whatever reason, this cashier just decided to, you know, on her own to, to not listen and do her own thing. Um, we do require the cashiers to do it and when they're being trained, we have supervisors that are watching over their shoulders to make sure that they perform the process. So in, during that training period, she was doing it. And then at some point, you know, she decided to, to not, or during that day, I don't know what, you know, her, her excuse was that she just didn't. And so, um, you know, that explanation wasn't sufficient for us and so it warranted us terminating her employment. But yeah, uh, other than that, you know, we, we do remind cashiers constantly um that they need to follow these processes. They're there not only for us, but for them and for the customer's safety, for everyone's safety. And so um, it's a big, you know, uh, part of the training process for the cashiers.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Seen none. A motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
And then seconded to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Lim. Uh, calling agenda item number fifteen, Eight Eight Pal Pal Supermarket.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Min Young Won Kihae Pope, Eighty-eight Parkers Market. On my right is David Choi, who is the president.
How do you spell his name, Ms. Wu?
David, B A V I D, last name Choi, C H O I.
Thank you. Ms. Nesty, could you read the charge?
Honor about March eighth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor to a minor, specifically Kai Mason at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statute.
Ms. Wu, how would your client wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second.
And moved and seconded to accept the no contest, please. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Ms. Nesty, what is your recommendation?
Uh, this is also part of the ACE uh compliance program. The clerk did ask for ID, it was a vertical ID. Uh, they did not ask the decoy if uh he was twenty-one years old. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Wu, would you or your client wish to provide a comment or explanation?
Yes, so um, it was the same POS system that the uh date of the uh work. And that the courage to purchase the need to be uh input and there was a small warning uh sign to show in the POS system. Uh, again, that the employee who um and also did that alcohol to the minor did not really pay attention. She asked to put the ID and she read it, but she just um allowed to sell the liquor. So the, she is not no longer employed with the corporation. And what we do something to put a need. A manager gather all other employees and re-educate and remind them for the um, standing for and how. We apologize and then make sure it doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wu. And if you could do me a favor and let your client know how serious we take these matters and we do wanna make sure this doesn't happen again and that the consequences can be more than just the monetary fine. So if you could explain that later, um, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item fifteen.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Wu. Calling agenda item number sixteen, DG Market.
Uh, I spoke with Mr. Luke. Uh, he's representing the licensee in this matter. He requested a one week continuance to April fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item sixteen to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And moved and seconded to continue agenda item number sixteen to April fifteenth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Calling agenda item number, number seventeen, Dean and DeLuca. Do we have anybody appearing for Dean and DeLuca?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Yohei Takahashi from Dean and DeLuca, Y O H E I T A K A H A S H I.
Ms. Nesty, could you read the charge, please?
Honor about March eighth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor. Specifically, Megan Ayala at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statute.
Mr. Takahashi, how would you like to plead?
Uh, this is uh, no contest, please.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Yep.
And moved and seconded to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item seventeen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shero.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Ms. Nesty, what is your recommendation?
Uh, this is a third violation. The first violation occurred April seventh, twenty eighteen. The licensee was fined one thousand dollars. The second violation occurred on February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Uh, the licensee was fined two thousand dollars at that time. Um, this being the third violation. My recommendation is a suspension of the license. Uh, this licensee reported uh gross liquor sale last year of approximately twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, which breaks down to approximately four hundred, forty-seven dollars a week or sixty-four dollars a day. Uh, that being the case, my recommendation uh is a fourteen-business-day suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Takahashi. Do you have any comment or explanation?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, uh, like she explained, uh, this is a third time violation and each time um different employee made a mistake. And uh, so by the time we, I mean, each violation happened, uh, I created the system to prevent you to sell the minor. So um, we have a ID catalog in a POS. Uh. Uh, okay. Why? Oh, no, okay.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna share a screen. I think the ID, yeah. Hold on.
So uh, yeah, so uh, the ID catalog at the each POS. Uh, and also um, we have uh the digital indicator which shows uh date of birth. Which shouldn't sell before the date. So uh, the each employee is supposed to check the ID and also compare with this digital indicator. Uh, that's uh, we've been, we, we've done this. And also uh, we have um, uh POS system has a age checking pop-up. And uh, what happened this time was um uh, this age checking pop-up didn't pop up because uh, the person who created the new item button. Uh, but that person actually uh didn't attach this age pop-up feature for this particular alcohol. So to prevent this same issue in the future, I hire a specific person who is in charge of creating a new button for that, not only alcohol or everything, but uh, so before, it's a multiple plus person uh create the button. So but now, I just only one person who is focusing on to create the button and also uh, check the, check the status of the, all the alcohol has a age checking feature, pop-up feature. So uh, I will be able to prevent the same issue again in the future. So I'm sorry, this is third time, so I, I, yeah, it sounds like I so many mistake, but uh, unfortunately, every time a different person and created the different mistake. So uh, I believe uh, this many layer of checking system, uh, I think under this condition, it wouldn't happen again. I'm so sorry, sir.
Ms. Nesty, do you have any comments on um the representations made by Mr. Takahashi?
Uh, no, I can't confirm it.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Takahashi.
Yes.
You mentioned and you showed us through the document sharing, three different processes that were either in place or at some point in time to try to prevent the sale of liquor to minor. And my question is, when, like, for example, the use of the ID catalog or the digital indicator, when were those first implemented? Was it before this violation or after?
Uh, the ID catalog and also uh indicator was before. And then uh, pop-up system is actually, uh, it's a more like a version of. I, I did before, but after this incident happened, then I upgraded and also I hire a specific person to check this uh the age-taking pop-up system. So uh, that's after this incident.
And you mentioned that there were three different employees involved in the first, second, and third violation.
Yes.
Any consequences to any of those employees, such as discipline or termination?
Uh, yeah, termination. All, all three are terminated already each time happened. And then we uh, um, every time uh, we try to remind our staff to through this step and also reminding our every staff this mistake uh, I mean, caused a problem for, of course, company. Not only company, but even though uh, the, each staff, uh, it caused a problem. So uh, and of course, uh, caused problem for minor people. So we uh, seriously uh, take this situation and then uh sincerely uh think as a team. So uh, we, every uh P-shift meeting, we talk about this alcohol uh situation and always try to remind by uh manager on duty every shift.
Okay, and I am concerned about the third violation. So you're representing that you're giving us assurances this will not happen again. But three times doesn't give me much confidence, Mr. Takahashi. And you did hear the prosecutor recommend a fourteen-business-day suspension?
Yes, uh, I really wish if uh, uh, I could have another chance without having a violation. Uh, I could have another chance without having a violation, uh, if it's possible. But like you said, that this is third time, so it's kinda hard to uh, hard to say. Uh, but uh, everybody, everybody know this situation is very, very uh serious condition and also. Everybody try to be more careful.
And, and I. I just want you to know, we, we, we have the ability or the. The power to actually revoke your license. And that would be a drastic consequence, but to me, it may reflect your inability to ensure that. Alcohol is not served to minors. And again, three times is a lot to me going back. As soon as two thousand eighteen. So I'm, I'm very concerned, um, I, I don't. Think we're gonna just give you another chance, but let me open the floor if the other commissioners have any questions or comments.
I do have um. A, a comment, um. I mean, to a point, you can upgrade your systems, but it comes down to training your employees on. How to read a license and what the ramifications are. Could you explain to us your process on how you train your new cashiers or employees coming in? Because. It also takes a person to, to input this data into, into your POS system. But ultimately, they should be reviewing that identification and. They could potentially flag it before it even goes into the system as well. So could you explain to us how you, what your process is to train?
Uh, yes, the training process is uh. Um, as a part of a learning caching system, I mean, the POS. Every, I mean, every uh new employee spend a whole long week with a trainer, then uh. All process uh go through with trainer and then especially alcohol sales, we do a role playing. Now, now we do a role playing, more uh multiple role playing and also uh we give them a test as well. Then uh, once they pass the test, then uh they can be standalone. That, that type of a training we do uh by spending uh, I mean, actually a five days.
And is your policy to ask for identification for all liquor sales?
Yes, uh, policy is that, yeah, every alcohol, we check the license and uh, and ID. And also every time they have to punch in the uh, the date of birth. And not only punch in, and they also have to compare with the digital indicator. So that's the process.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I, you know, um, I remember what the two prior violations, I think I was the one that actually.
Yes.
Institute those prior fines, so I'm very disappointed to see you here again for a third violation.
I'm so sorry.
I, I, I echo what um Commissioner Lee said that. You can put a lot of technology there, but when it, it comes down to the customer service, you know, I work, I was a cashier, I was a bartender. I was a waitress, I worked in customer service. And, you know, you, you folks, this is Dean and DeLuca. You folks are branded around the world, very high-end luxury, you know. Um, it's, it's, you can notice when someone is young, if you're looking at their face and talking with them. You know, if, uh, your cashier should be trained in that kind of customer service. This person looks very young. I should ask them how old they are. You know, in, instead of relying so much on the technology. This seems like you folks need to be talking more with your customers about customer service. You know, in a, in a place like Dean and DeLuca, you folks are not selling that much alcohol. Your gross liquor sales were. Under thirty thousand dollars a year, sixty-four dollars a day. You know, so it shouldn't, this is not like it's a busy dark club, nightclub. Where you're having hundreds of patrons there every day, you know, ordering alcohol. This, this, this shouldn't be occurring so often in a establishment like Dean and DeLuca, sir. So I'm very disappointed to see you here again for a third time.
Yes, yes, I agree. So sorry.
Comis-, I'm sorry, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to convene into executive session unless you have another motion.
Sure.
Can I get a second?
A second.
I've been moved in second and to convene into executive session to speak with legal counsel. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, we are now in executive session. All right, uh, we're now back on the official record, uh, and we're on. Agenda item number seventeen, Dean and DeLuca, commissioners, type of action.
Let me sure, be sure you're muted.
Thank you. Mr. Takahashi, we, we do as a commission appreciate. Your sincerity and your efforts to try to prevent this happening again. But given that this is a third uh violation. The commission is going, or my motion is gonna be to. Approve the recommendation to suspend the license for fourteen days, but for clarification. It's for calendar days, not business days, so fourteen calendar day suspension.
Second.
I understand.
And moved in second and to suspend the license for fourteen calendar days. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Takahashi.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, Long's Drugs, number nine one eight five.
Good evening, uh, commissioners, uh, Newton Chu on behalf of Long's Drugs. I'd like to ask for a continuance till May sixth for this matter, please.
What's the reason for the continuance, Mr. Chu?
Yes, I'm waiting for a, a file from headquarters.
Okay, Ms. Nestie?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chu also discussed this with me. I have no objection.
Okay, thank you. Motion to continue agenda item eighteen until May sixth twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And moved in second and to continue agenda, agenda item number eighteen to May sixth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Calling agenda item number nineteen, Jong Mi Corporation.
Hello. Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Peter, P E T E R, last name Huang, H W A N G. I am president of Jong Mi Corporation.
Thank you, Ms. Nestie, could you please read the charge?
Honor about March eight twenty twenty in the city of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor. Or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Mark Anthony Sumaget in the license premises in violation of. Two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mr. Huang, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please?
Second.
Moved in second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number nineteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, motion is carried.
Ms. Nestie, your recommendation, please?
This is considered a first violation with a recommended fine of one thousand dollars. This was also part of the ACE program. The clerk did not ask for identification and did not ask if the decoy was twenty-one years old.
Thank you. Mr. Huang, you have any comment or explanation?
Yeah, the honor, I'm so sad that I never to check the ID. So right now you're gonna be, I upgrade. Uh, also verification system my register, so and I retrain all my employees.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item nineteen.
Second.
And moved in second and all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty, Macaulay Union Service Inc.
Hi, my name is Gina Tomas, G I N A T O M A S, uh, manager of Macaulay Union Service Inc.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas, you're not driving, are you?
No, I'm, my kids have football, so I have to stay in the car, it's been an hour and a half.
I'm just making sure you're safe. Um, Nestie, could you please read the charge?
Honor about March eight twenty twenty in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor. Specifically Mark Anthony Sumaget at the license premises in violation of two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Tomas, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please?
Second.
And moved in second and to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number twenty. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Ms. Nestie, what is your recommendation?
Uh, this is a first violation, the clerk, uh, this is part of the ACE program. The clerk did ask for identification, which was a vertical ID, but did not ask uh if the decoy was twenty-one years old. This being a first violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Tomas, do you have any comment or explanation?
Um, yes, this is on a Sunday. That particular employee was fired that day. Um, and I made sure that all the rest of the employees knew that and saw that. We only have three, so it's, it wasn't. Um, too much of a. Um, what's it called? Uh, too much of a. Retraining process because one is an owner, which is my mom, and then my, one is my uncle and another is a night cashier, but that's been with us for five years. This two particular employee just. Made a mistake or whatever, but she was like, oh, she no longer uh works there and the three. Employees that are there who do sell alcohol are completely aware of the process of checking ID and the, yeah. So we definitely let everybody know and make sure, we retrained everybody to make sure that they. Are very aware of the consequences and how bad it could be.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item twenty.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Tomas.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Macaulay Pantry.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Bunsook. Last name is Lee. My first name is E U N S O O K.
Thank you, Ms. Nestie, could you please read the charge?
Honor about March eight twenty twenty in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor. Or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Mark Anthony Sumaget in the license premises in violation of. Two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item twenty-one.
Second.
And moved in second and to accept the no contest, please. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Ms. Nestie, what is your recommendation?
Yeah, this was part of the ACE program. Uh, the clerk did not ask for identification and did not ask the decoy. If he was twenty-one years old. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, do you have any comment or explanation?
Okay, I'm over.
I'm sorry? I'm, I'm asking you, Ms. Lee, do you wanna provide any comment or explanation?
Uh, nothing. Okay. I'm no contest.
Okay. Okay, um, what happened to the employee who sold the alcohol?
Oh, yeah, that's not employee. It was, I work by myself seven days a week, every day, wow, but. The timing is my brother visit me, so. He helped me few hour, I went to somewhere, so it wasn't my brother. That, the customer was tall and. Big body, that's why he thinking about the. The. Uh, more than twenty-one years old, that's why he didn't check up the ID, but his mistake, that's why, the reason.
Um, commissioners, do you have any questions to the licensee? Seen a motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-one.
Second.
And moved in second and to approve the recommended fine for agenda item number twenty-one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-two, Nikos.
Hi. Hello, Nico, Nicola Chaz, N I C O L S, C H A I Z E.
Thank you. Ms. Nestie, can you please read the charge?
Honor about February eight twenty twenty in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Kai Mason. At the license premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase, how do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please?
Second.
Moved in second and to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item number twenty-two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Ms. Nestie, what is your recommendation?
Uh, this is a third violation. The first violation occurred on May sixteenth twenty seventeen. Uh, and the licensee was fined one thousand dollars. The second violation occurred March thirty-one twenty eighteen. And the um license was suspended for seven calendar days. This licensee reported gross liquor sales last year of approximately eighty-two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars. Which breaks down to approximately one thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars per week or about two hundred twenty-six dollars a day. Uh, that being the case, my recommendation is a seven calendar day suspension.
I, if I recall correctly, there are two licenses on this premises. Um. Does your, do your records show which location? Is covered by this license? Either the restaurant or I think the market side.
Maybe the market.
Okay.
Retail.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chase, um, thank you for clarifying that. Do you have any comment or explanation?
No, I'm just ashamed to be here for second time. Um, I think uh, uh, we do overtraining, we can do for every, every single employee. Uh, this employee is no longer working with us, just like we went before. I, you know, there's, there's too much human error happening and we can, can, kind of tired of it for, for, for that business. Um, I agree with Commissioner Madame Amin, customer service is really important. And I think we're missing that part because we have high-volume restaurants, high-volume retail. It's kind of one after the other, one after the other. So we did open up a second register in the fish market. Which, by the way, we opened up right, and right after that COVID happened, so we never really used it, but now we use it, so we've. We have two cashiers in place to spend more time with each of our, each customers. We have a lot of foreign uh boat people coming, so it takes time to check ID and passport and things like that. So we, we have to spend more time with every single customer coming through. It was two registers now in the fish market. Um, we have a, 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 ID driver's assent, I, uh, video machine. We bought about twelve hundred dollars about two years ago. Uh, we have every tools that the employee needs to do to check. Every single employee, every customer coming in buying alcohol. I'm very sorry, I'm very sorry to be here again. I, I, I really don't wanna be. I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry to be here again. I I really don't wanna be never again.
Sure. Um Ms. Nestie, and and I may have missed this, but was this part of our complaints program?
Yes, it was.
And was, what were the circumstances? Was an ID asked for?
Uh the clerk did ask for identification, which was a vertical ID, um but did not ask if the decoy was twenty-one years old.
Yeah. Uh commissioners, any questions or comments to Mr. Chase? Okay, uh seen an uh motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
And moved and seconded to convene into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
I also vote aye. Okay, right. I also vote aye. We're now in executive session. Uh we're now back on the record. Commissioners, any further questions, comments, or type of action?
Thank you, Chair. Uh Mr. Chase, I I'm not sure if you were uh listening to the proceedings when we were adjudicating Dean and DeLuca and we suspended them for two weeks?
I was.
Okay, um we, I I don't necessarily need to repeat my comments, but those still apply here. We do take these types of violations very seriously. And I wanna add that there's also reputational risks. Um you folks, as far as I know, have a great reputation. And when word gets out that there's sales to minors, um it can harm your reputation above and beyond your ability to sell alcohol. It it could um have other impacts on your business. Um my motion is gonna be to approve the recommendation to suspend the license for seven calendar days. Um and before we act on that motion, I also wanna admonish you and your employees that should we see you again for a fourth violation, there's gonna be more serious repercussions. So again, my motion is to suspend the license for seven calendar days.
Second.
And moved and seconded to suspend the license for seven calendar days. All those in, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miss Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Good luck. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Livestock Tavern, the Chin Chin Bar.
Yes, I spoke with um counsel for Livestock Tavern, Mia Oxiana. She requested a continuance of the contested hearing. Um I I did not object. I would request that this matter be set for June third, twenty twenty-one.
Ms. Nestie, um I don't have a recollection. Do your records or notes indicate that a plea was made and the charge was denied?
Uh it does, and I I don't know if I know the date that.
Uh that, I'm not concerned about the date. I I just wanna confirm for the record that a plea was entered and the charge denied.
That's correct.
Okay, uh motion to continue agenda item twenty-three for a contested hearing on June three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miss Shiro.
Aye.
Min.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Uh agenda item number twenty-three is scheduled for a June third contested hearing. Uh thank you, Ms. Nestie.
Thank you.
Moving on to other business, agenda item number twenty-four, liquor administrator, uh legislative update.
Um I have nothing uh in uh additional that uh beyond that was reported in the weekly report. Almost done.
Yeah, thank you for that, Ms. Ryan. We appreciate your uh diligent and hard work at the legislature like every year.
Been an interesting year.
For sure. Say the least. Uh moving on to agenda item number twenty-five, any administrative matters?
Oh, hello, uh oh, I I wanted to add that um I would was trying to get in touch with Senator Carl Rhodes to hear HB one thirty-seven. Finally, he called me back yesterday. And since it's uh it'll automatically come back next year. Uh he's that he's assured me that we can work together on that bill.
Terrific. Not up for reelection next year, is he?
Twenty twenty-two.
Well, we'll see what happens. We'll see what happens then. All right.
Before we get a lot, I have a question for the administration. So I think the current plan is to reconvene all of us in person in two weeks. Is that still the plan?
The twenty-second.
We should be for April twenty-second.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then um I know we've been um studying contested cases down the road. When when did the first ones start and is it gonna be pretty sequential after that?
My understanding is that uh from now on uh uh through June, there is one set for every single week. It's just that we have never been able to execute one yet, something all us. We we won't schedule more than one a week just in case they both go. But there's one scheduled every single week from now and through June. I think the June third, that June third was the first open date that we could uh do a contested matter.
Okay, and last question is, um how are we doing on the backlog of adjudications? Are we catching up? Are we still kind of in the same spot?
Um that that one I don't have a a ready answer for. We could, what we can do is uh take a a a closer look and advise you by email. I I simply don't know what the answer to that is.
Okay, I'm just curious because I know we've, in the past few weeks or so, we've continued a bunch of matters. Um even though pleas were not taken or denials were not made. And I I think for all of our benefit, especially the commission, we're volunteers. If we have, you know, twenty contested man, I'm sorry, twenty adjudications at once contested, I can see a very long evening and I hope we can prevent that from occurring. Thank you for listening.
I agree with uh what Commissioner Meixi Er said as well. Let's try to try to keep it a reasonable amount of time for everybody, including our commission staff.
Okay, thank you.
There's nothing else. Uh meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.